As he alluded to, my name is John Hastings. I'm the Regional Sales Manager here for Dominion Voting. Thank you first and foremost, once again, for being here. We do not take the opportunity lightly. Hopefully we said that's for last. You guys have been through this before, so we will do our best to make sure you get the most out of this exercise. That's what we want to do. So if you have a question, normally we want it to be very interactive and shout out. Because of the timing restraints, we have you guys that have this room at 3:00. If it's very important, which I'm sure that if it is, we need to get to it, please shout it out. If not, we'll be more than happy to answer every question you have at the end of the presentation. So again, thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, so right down the road, live in the Commonwealth. You can only live in one state, so I gotta make it a point to say that. Understand the dynamic going on at the state and very short car ride here. I think that relationship we're trying to establish, we want to work with you here in Lebanon. Been here numerous times and gotten to know Mike very well in this county. So thank you again for the opportunity. Looking forward to working with you in the steps ahead. With me today in the back, I have Matt Mainhart. Matt is a sales engineer, also from Pittsburgh. Very fortunate to have Matt on the team. We looked up and down from New England to Florida for an engineer on the East Coast. We found a guy right here in our own backyard. So thank you, Matt, for coming. And with me have Dr. Eric Kummer. Eric is the Director of Product Strategy. So he is the brains behind a lot that you see here, how to develop it, design it, has been here since the start of a lot of Dominion's products. So we're very fortunate to have Eric. It is a treat to have him out here. So thanks, Steve, for coming out. Again, thank you. So as we move forward, what I want to do, just hit the right there. There we go. A little bit about Dominion. If you could see the screen, want to be sure to give you a high level overview of who we are. I think it's important to understand where we are and who we are before we get into actual product mix. We founded in 2003, headquartered in Denver, Colorado. Our main thing is, we love our products. We love the idea, the backend, frontend voting equipment, voting systems. But the main thing we want to establish is a relationship and that we are a service solutions provider. So the end of the day, Mike knows he can give us a call at Dominion and we got his back. We currently have six offices in North America, four in the United States, 250 employees, and over 1,200 customers. Dominion currently is important, I think, a little fact to note, we support over 28 different legacy products. So after acquiring different voting companies, specifically in Pennsylvania, Sequoia and Premier are two companies that we acquired in the acquisitions years ago, we support over 20 different legacy types of systems. So we have a lot of different people from different companies over the years to formulate what you have here. So it's not just one election provider. We had it for years past and we're just gonna keep being bullheaded in this difficult group of what we have. We want to take a lot of the different inputs from the different systems that we acquired. And that's what you see here today. Slide? Hit it a few times to let you know when to stop. Keep going. All right, so one more? Here we go. So our US footprint, it's important to note, we're in 33 different states all across the country. And very important to note, the big jurisdictions, and I'll explain that why in a second. Cook County, Illinois, City, Chicago, Wayne County, Detroit, Michigan, Sacramento, San Francisco, Santa Clara, and San Bernardino, California, and Clark County, Nevada, which is Las Vegas. Reason why that's important, Clark County specifically, I have that territory. They have roughly 4,000 machines, roughly 5 million registered voters or some odd like that. There's a county next door, 500 registered voters, five machines. They use the exact same system. So the scalability of our product is, no matter how big, how small, or how medium-sized a county, it all functions and works the same. We're statewide in Louisiana, Nevada, New Mexico, Colorado, and Alaska, and pretty much all of New York with the exception of three counties, and all of New Jersey with the exception of two counties. Office again headquartered in Denver, Colorado. We have offices in San Leandro, California, McKinney, Texas. And our operations is in Jamestown, New York, so not very far at all. And that's important, you know, during election time, you need ops, parts, pieces and equipment, it's right in Jamestown. A couple of states I wanted to point out before I hand it off to Eric. Again, over the past few years, we've been lucky enough to, and fortunate enough, to win a lot of the statewide, let's just say, purchasing contracts, whether it's actual state or individual counties. Colorado kicked things off for us with our Democracy Suite system. We're currently in almost every other, I know it says 55 to 64, I think three just upgraded. So I think there's four more that we have to upgrade and they're just waiting on some money. So Colorado implementation was a big win for us. Eric was vital in that endeavor. They have the product mix you see over there. Of course, they vote a little bit differently than we do here in Pennsylvania. They predominantly vote by mail and paper ballots. So hit the next slide, please. Thank you. So that was a big win for us. And the other one was Michigan. So Colorado basically asked us to design, create, implement, and train them in a presidential election in six months' time. We did that. We were able to do that. We had the same success in Michigan. So Michigan, December of 2016, right after the presidential election, they gave us a year-long test. And I think it's important to note that the other folks that you might have seen, not that we wanted to disparage number one or not, but I think it's important to note that we ranked the highest in technical requirements, service and maintenance, staffing, experience, performance, rollout, implementation plan. We ranked 91% of the year-long test among the other vendors that were in the running. At that point in time, the county still had the opportunity to make a decision on who they wanted as their vendor, and they chose Dominion. Overwhelmingly, I guess, the majority of counties did. So we're very fortunate to have Michigan as a partner with us. The other two that are not there is Nevada, and Nevada's a state that I cover. And the reason why it's important to mention, we just sold them last year. We ran a very successful primary election. We implemented and trained them in six months' time, and they have the product mix you see right here. Again, we'll get into more of that, but I just, I think it's vital to show where we are and where our footprint is in the country. And not only that, listening to a lot of the feedback, so voters, poll workers, technicians, election staffs, and county commissioners, we've listened and we want to make sure that we point that out. We made a couple of different adjustments even in three years. This is our fourth generation touchscreen ImageCast X tablet. So we're not just resting, we're not just settling. We're the most active vendor in certification at the federal level and at the state amongst all other vendors. So what you see today, most likely in two, three years from now, if you would like to have this option, you will get the newest, latest, greatest software technologies that the market has to offer. So we're doing our best to make sure that we're always updating and revamping our system.
Are you federally and state certified at this point?
For the version, we are getting certified. No, not at this point. We are, we have just begun that process.
For both levels?
Correct.
No, no, no.
For EAC, yep, for not both levels.
We're right at the end of the federal campaign and we're...
But you've not received it yet?
We have not received the number yet. And then I believe we're scheduled to begin the state cert, well, they need the number as soon as we get the number, but we've started all of the paperwork to get the state effort underway.
Exactly right. And we were in, we're in once or twice a month talks with the Department of State, Jonathan Marks and his team regarding the timeline, because we know we're under a different time, let's just say...
Compressed.
Compressed timeline, thanks Eric. So with that being said, we are doing, we're taking every step possible to make sure we get this certified and get it implemented and get folks trained all across the state. We currently have 11 counties that we support with our legacy products, and we'll get into those, but that's our current customer base. And once again, thank you so much for attending. There are two important things that I will say to unbluing the face, that we want to kind of differentiate ourselves. And Eric's gonna get into that, and that is commercially available off-the-shelf components, COTS. It's essentially everyday parts and pieces used to operate our election system. So over the course of the long run, and Eric's gonna get into this, it'll cost the county much less than proprietary parts and pieces that you might have to pay for now or that become obsolete in the future. So that's a foundational piece that we have here at Dominion, as well as the Audit Mark. I'm gonna throw that word out to you. It's a patented core technology that for commissioners, so you have price and you have full transparency and audibility. That is a core patented technology that Eric will go over, but I want you to keep that in the back of your mind as we move forward with the presentation. Eric?
Hey, Todd. Yes, sir. Do you have an estimate of when you might be certified?
Year's end. We talked, and that all depends on how quickly we get this number, and we're eyeing the end of July, and then how quickly the state can turn that around. So we were told they're gonna expedite the process with the mandate of 2019. Everything needs to be turned over at the very latest. So we are taking all the necessary steps to make that process go as quickly as possible with Parisburg. Thank you.
And just to backtrack, one slide there. So we really are a customer-focused company. So this system that you see over here, the ImageCast X, as John said, this is really the sort of the fourth iteration of it. We started development on it in conjunction with Denver County in Colorado back in 2014. Within six months of our first meeting, we ran their first election. We took feedback from that election and we made improvements and modifications to it. And then that's what got us the statewide contract in Colorado. From that point, then we moved on to Michigan. We got feedback from our key partners in Michigan, which led to our second iteration of that product. We then took that experience to Nevada. Nevada had further input on the product, so that got us to our third iteration of the product. And what you see here today is further improvements with Pennsylvania and a couple other states in mind, which is really our fourth one. And that's, that's in the span of less than four years. All right, so that's our development cycle, and we've been able to continuously go through various certification efforts very rapidly to adapt to all of those different markets. All right. At the heart of the system is what's called Democracy Suite. Right, that's a suite of products that runs the entire election. Key things there, it is one database, one database only for all of the voting channels. It's one database for laying out the ballots, designing the ballots, printing the ballots. It's one database that drives all of the voting terminals, whether it's an ImageCast X tablet for the in-person voting, or whether it's the ImageCast Central for counting absentee ballots. It even provides support for UACAB voters as well. We have that product, and it all comes from one system, and that is Democracy Suite. It's made up of a couple of different components. It's a suite of components. The first one is Election Event Designer. That's really the core election management system. That's where you define your geopolitical entities, contest candidates, and styling the ballots, and provisioning all of the machines that are fielded for election day. Again, for in-person voting, it's ImageCast X. The X is because it's configurable. There's two different implementations here. On this side is the ImageCast VVPAT, which stands for Voter Verified Paper Audit Trail. So the voting interface is the same between the two. The big difference is, is once a ballot is cast on the ImageCast VVPAT, the official record is printed here on a reel-to-reel thermal printer. The voter verifies the record that's printed, and then when they hit cast, the results are stored directly on this.
How long does the thermal print?
We have archival paper that exceeds all statutory requirements. I think it's good for about five years. Statutory requirements are generally 24 months.
Cost of the paper and how many prints from a roll?
The roll, depending on the ballot content, anywhere from 100 to 200 per roll.
And the cost of the roll?
I don't talk dollars and cents, I'm just the tech guy. So John will have to get you that information, and that's part of the contract.
$10. A roll.
Key thing is, is...
I'll verify that for you, sir.
Key thing is, at the end of the day, no matter what the configuration is, the official record is the paper. Right, that is what the voter verifies. And unlike previous legacy systems that had VVPATs, we actually have a scanner in here, so the record is being printed and scanned and interpreted just like a separate tabulator is used. Okay?
Where does the paper go?
It stays in here.
Is it on a roll?
Yes, it's on a roll.
Does it get separated?
No.
Why has that changed from last time? That's the reason they didn't approve them last time?
That's not technically true. There've been some discussions with the state. You're talking about voter privacy and being able to backtrack. In this configuration, you always have more than one unit, and at the federal level and at the state level, they've accepted that the randomization of sending voters to different machines does preserve voter anonymity.
So our machines then are technically okay that we have now, we just have to add paper?
You'd have to take that up with the state, I'm not sure about that, because the system that you have right now would never pass federal certification. This is compliant with the latest VBSG 1.1 standards, where your current, your current system, even if it had a paper record, would not meet those certifications. Okay.
Mr. and that's $4 overall.
$4?
The other implementation, again, same voter interface, it's the ImageCast BMD that stands for Ballot Marking Device. Again, it's the same process, voter goes up, makes their selections, but at the end, what they get is instead of the record printing out, I think I passed it, instead of printing out on a reel-to-reel, you actually get a physical piece of paper that then is scanned on a separate tabulator. Right, so the device, again, it's a standard touchscreen interface, but it's modern, it's high contrast, high clarity. You do not have anything like, you'd never have to calibrate the screen, it's just like your phone. You have full control over things like language at any point in the ballot, also text size you can change if you're low visual acuity, as well as contrast levels. So you can go to black on white, or white on black. These are all in support of the VBSG guidelines, Voter Ver, voluntary voter system guidelines for accessibility. It is fully ADA compliant as well with a handset and audio feedback. It does support two-switch paddles and sip and puff as well, as our proprietary ATI audio tactile interface. So again, I'm gonna go back to English, Spanish is not very good these days. Basic navigation throughout the ballot. Voter selects anywhere within a given choice, and that's selected. It does prevent voters from overvoting, which is one of the nice things about a touchscreen interface. If I want to modify it, I deselect and select my other option. Does have write-ins with a full keyboard support. And we can just move through the ballot. This is a vote for three. There is a final review before printing anything, and again, the interface is identical between the two. It's just the form of the final record is different. So once I verify, I simply hit print. And this is what the voter gets. All right, and this is a reduced ballot. It shows for every contest, the choices that were made. If I skipped any contest, it would clearly indicate that no selection was made for that. At this point, this ballot has not been cast yet. The voter reviews this, verifies that it's the choices that they intended to make, and then it is scanned on our ImageCast Precinct tabulator. Whether it's being scanned here or internally scanned here, we're taking an image of the ballot, and we're appending what's called the Audit Mark, which is a text-based record of how the tabulator actually interpreted the ballot when it was scanned. And we keep that together with all of the records throughout the entire process. That was instrumental in our implementation in Colorado. They adopted a statewide statute for conducting what's called a risk-limiting audit, which is a statistical auditing method. It's kind of all the rage in the election community these days. And it requires that you have a one-to-one ballot record from the paper to the electronic record, and our Audit Mark was instrumental in implementing that. At the end of the day, if it's in this configuration, all of the results are stored on here. Poll workers reclose the polls. You get a results tape that shows all of the ballots totals that were cast in the precinct. And behind these locked and sealed doors are compact flash memory elements. You would pull one of those out, put it in the transfer case, send it down to the central office for tally and accumulation. All right, if you're in this configuration, behind one of these locked, sealed doors are USB memory devices. That's where we store the results. You would pull that out, send that down to the central office, and tally it accumulate off of it. And the results reports can be printed directly on here posted.
So if you have 10 machines, you're gonna have 10?
Yes, and we can consolidate in the precinct for a consolidated precinct report. But you will have 10 memory elements, yes?
To carry in?
That's our in-person solution. One other thing to mention, this is a full hybrid support too. So obviously, for ADA requirements, this is the device or this is the device you use, but you can also have standard hand-marked ballots as well, if you want to go a traditional full paper route for most of your voters. The device regardless, that's the wrong precinct again. For the people that were here earlier, I'm learning. That ImageCast Precinct is the most used optical scanner actually in the world. Over 100,000 deployed.
How much are those, those papers to have printed and the cost of the paper and all that?
That's a great question. We don't do a printing. We work with a third party here at the state, and that's something that Michael currently uses, William Penn Printing, correct?
Well, we don't have here at the moment.
No, for your absentee's possibly?
Oh, we do everything.
In-house, okay. I can get those figures for you from the third party.
I will say that, again, our ballot format is, it is a very, let's, I don't want to say less tolerant, but the tolerance requirements on our ballot are not very tight. So old paper ballots required heavy paper cardstock, offset printing, very expensive heavyweight paper. This is standard. We support 80 to 100-pound text paper. It's a lot less expensive than cardstock, and these are suitable for printing on digital presses. And even on OK Data based laser printers, if you were doing in-house printing. So my point here is that even in this system, if this was your ADA and you really wanted to go to a more traditional paper-based hand-marked ballot system, the same tabulator can scan both ballot formats. There's no configuration option that has to be changed, so you could actually have a mix of voters voting on hand-mark and on the ICX as well. So that's our in-precinct. This is our absentee central count back office scanner. Again, off-the-shelf, it's a Canon scanner. It'll do about 3,500 to 4,000 ballots an hour. It's the same basic software that runs all of our other equipment. We take an image of the front and back. We append the Audit Mark. All of those results are transferred directly to our results and tally reporting system.
How much?
For the Ice, ImageCast Central, G1130, everything you see here is 25,000. Software, scanner, backend, we call it a kit. You'll understand why once I break down further more with the numbers. We also have another option, smaller scanner, same exact capability, but you put less ballots in. That's called our M160, and that is $7,500.
Just want to point out, in the middle of that stack was another ballot format that's been through the wringer. That's the beauty of these Canon scanners. I can, and when you're dealing with absentee ballots, you'll get them back in all sorts of states of disrepair. These scanners are very good at paper handling, and if I bring up that image, you'd be hard-pressed to tell it was ever wrinkled.
Yes, sir, question?
More type of question. You said it's too hard to judge, lock, hard to judge?
Yeah.
And one goes back to the law?
Yes.
And the other one goes in the minority section?
Well, yeah, I mean, it follows whatever state requirements.
What's required to get the information off of that for it to be reviewed by other than the main audit?
To read the results off the cartridge, you do need a cartridge reader system for doing that.
You'd have to come back. But that's, just like the PEBs now, that's basically...
Well, I don't really like the PEB.
Yeah, well, it's not a proprietary memory element. It's off-the-shelf compact flash for the ImageCast precinct. It's standard USB for the ImageCast X VVPAT.
To read it, is it proprietary?
Yes, it is. It's our software. So there's a couple of things there. For security, all the results are encrypted inside. Right, so we can guarantee the integrity of the results. So you would need the encryption keys to decrypt that. The images are not encrypted, so those are publicly viewable, and they're standard TIFF format. So most states that we've actually implemented in, they actually make all of the PDF or the TIFF images of the ballots publicly available.
I see you have a battery sitting there. What's the battery life?
In this configuration in the VVPAT, a single battery is good for about two and a half hours of continuous operation. The requirement is two hours. It does have two bays, and they're hot-swappable, so you can have up to five hours uninterrupted, and then you can swap batteries if needed.
What's the weight of that piece of equipment?
This is 22 pounds.
And it's, how much weight is on that other one?
This is, I don't know, right offhand, I'm gonna guess about four and a half pounds.
Four and a half pounds. And then the durability, I mean, it's a big screen, how many have cracked, dropped, and it looks like they could tip off the table.
Yeah, well, I am not aware of any field breakage at this point, and again, this goes back to our first implementation in 2015, including 5,000 units that were used two weeks ago. I'm not aware of any field breakage, and I was onsite in Clark County, which, yeah, none of them came back broken. I will say that, again, this is an off-the-shelf unit from a company called A Value. They generally do applications in hospitals, specifically crash carts. So they're, they're used to making pretty robust devices. Yes, if I pick this up above my head and throw it on the ground, it's probably gonna break.
You know, I've been thinking about these off-the-shelf parts as opposed to proprietary. And I want to ask the question, what happens if one of your suppliers goes bankrupt or for some other reason gets bought out to a competitor?
Right.
Whatever it might be, what happens to serviceability, et cetera?
Yeah, so we have very close relationship with all of our vendors. So with A Value, we have a guaranteed contracted lifetime of units available for 10 years and parts availability for 20 years. All right. Followed by other components, Canon, we have a similar relationship with Canon, where they have guaranteed us a certain lifetime window, and they keep us informed if any of their components are going end of life, and we can get those recertified. Because they're off-the-shelf components, getting what's called a dominimus change certification is very easy at the federal level, and from our conversations with the state, they're adopting a similar process. Right, so all of our computers are Dell-based, and we have the same kind of relationship with Dell. So they know what our parts list are, and when they have a unit that looks like it's gonna be going end of life, they let us know six to 12 months ahead of time, and then they work with us to identify the replacement unit, and then we submit that to all of the certification authorities, and they generally turn that around now in one to two weeks. But again, these are companies, this is what they do, so they have much better relationship with their parts vendors for actually, you know, manufacturing these units. We're a voting company. We make voting software. Right, we don't build equipment. We let somebody else, that's their main relationship. They've got their factories, they've got their suppliers, and then we work with them in very close collaboration to make sure that they can meet our requirements as far as parts and lifetime.
I see you have two sets of plastic cards up there.
Two sets of...
Plastic cards.
These, yeah.
Yeah, one says voter.
Yep.
And one says...
Poll worker.
Poll, poll.
Yeah.
How many, in a primary, where we have usually two major parties or sometimes three parties, and you're only allowed to cast for each party?
Yep.
And we have independents who can cast for others. How many sets of cards do we need? Do you know how much that costs?
Yeah, so Mike and I were talking about that. So there's a couple of different ways... Yeah, so it really, it really depends on the implementation that Lebanon goes with. So right now, the poll worker is the main access to the device. All right, and it's, it's basically, it's called two-factor authentication. A poll worker can't do anything without this card and a unique PIN. But one of the things they can also do, much like your current process, is I can activate the ballot as poll worker for the voter directly, so that they don't require a card at all. Poll workers can control that. If you go through an actual voter card itself, again, it depends on the implementation, but generally you have an activation station, so you only need generally five to 10, it depends on the number of machines, but five to 10 per precinct, and they can be reused and reprogrammed for each voter. So as they come in and get checked off, oh, you're a Republican voter in precinct two, this card is programmed for that corresponding ballot. When you put it in the machine, it will bring up the correct ballot. Once the ballot's cast, this card is invalidated, can't be used again until it's reprogrammed. Costs?
$8 with the encryption. Now, each kit, as we call them, so you see the group of configuration, they come with five apiece. So really, you do not even need to purchase these individually. However, I would recommend it when I do quote it, because just like anything else... However, I would recommend it when I do quote it, because just like anything else, we're going to be somewhat consumable.
So, the clerk's, you're going to have to reprogram?
It depends on the configuration. They have their system set up, and I know since we had this conversation, they have their system set up so different jurisdictions can do it different ways. But one of the ways that they can do it is you could have a poll worker that basically would have the card that would basically start the session, similar to what we have now with a machine operator that has a PEB that would start the session. And I'm assuming you can program that card to be whatever it would need to be.
Yes.
So, it would be a Democrat or Republican if it's in the primary or.
Correct.
So, we'll look at our funky little moon thing.
Yes.
Well, that's a little bit different, because that lets them know what kind of ballot style it is, and so that would be something that we would have to deal with. But yeah. But they have the capability of doing it different ways, because they even have the ability to have it hooked up to a poll book. They don't sell poll books, that's why there's not one here, electronic poll books, but they have the capability with those cards that you could have a vendor come in with an electronic poll book that would then, they would do in conjunction with their cards, then would have that information on it, and then the actual person would put that card in, and it would have their information as far as being able to say what ballot they need. Am I being wrong on any of that?
No, that's absolutely correct.
This is a conversation Eric and I had, that's why I'm trying to explain it to answer your question.
Yeah, so we work with several different poll book manufacturers. So, knowing, Botec, Tenex.
That's not a problem in this county.
Right, but I'm just saying they have the capability. So, it's different ways you could do it.
Looking forward down the road, we have integrated with those, and we work closely with them. So, if the county ever went in that direction.
My question is two, maybe three parts. You had a slide up there where Michigan was a big user. Do you have any knowledge of the breakdown of how many went with?
Michigan was all this configuration only.
Okay.
All right? Nevada was only this configuration.
Okay.
Colorado was half of this. It was this for the in-person voting, but instead of scanning, because they do mostly vote by mail, and then they have vote centers for early vote and election day. So, instead of actually scanning, they would just put it in a dummy ballot box, and everything was brought back to the central office and scanned here.
So, are those configurations interchangeable?
Yes.
That they are?
Yes.
So, then, my third part of the question is, if, let's just say, how did you differentiate? What are you calling them?
ICX VVPAT.
Okay.
And ICX BMD.
Okay. PAT, BMD.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pat and BMD.
Right. Is, do you offer a scenario or a contract where one is selected?
And you want to migrate at some point?
Yeah. And so, does that happen? Obviously, it can happen.
Yeah, it's never happened, but I could foresee it potentially happening. Yeah.
Yes, I can. So, to answer that question, even in Tennessee, there's been discussions, that's another state that I've handled. They are very late in the game in the paper trail aspect. They just want just the touchscreen, it's a direct record electronic device. John, a couple of years from now, can I just buy the VVPAD? Yeah, the whole idea of the system is to have interchangeable parts. So, to answer your question, contractually, you didn't like that setup, and let's just say, we screwed up, we liked the VVPAD better, you plug and play.
Okay.
And we can work with you.
Maybe there's some negotiation.
Exactly, and then voting reform laws too, and that was the other part. So, the off-the-shelf equipment helps. We're having very serious talks in this state about voting reform laws. Let's just say you go to vote centers, and you shut down, just throwing it out there, I don't know, five precincts. So, you have 55, you're down to 50, you don't need as many parts and pieces, we pull that back. Again, off-the-shelf, or if you want to add, or you want to have more paper-based, that's how you want to do it. We have the capability to do so.
There's a lot of flexibility with the interchangeability and even changing between the different.
Yeah, again, because the whole point is, it's the same voter interface. It's the same platform. It literally is a configuration option in the definition of the machine.
Okay. Jumping to adjudication.
Yep.
Starting to begin, I can go to the other. The one with the thermal printer?
Yes.
What does that do on the roll? Is it just a little square, or is it a ball remains?
No, it has all, it has all of the choices and the contest names associated with it.
The little square is just for ease of the computer reading?
Yeah, and it also has security information. So, this is what comes out of the BMD, and that's exactly the same format that's written on the thermal printer as well.
Okay.
So, they're identical.
So, we can just?
Yeah.
Put it on a reader?
Yes.
An old MicroFich machine.
Pretty much.
And run it.
Yeah.
Because I care, even with my best glasses, I believe I can do that some also.
What's the life expectancy of your machine?
Minimum 10 years.
What's the maximum?
More than 10 years.
So, we had, like Eric had mentioned, manufacturer guaranteed to make it 10 plus. It doesn't mean it can't last in years 15, 16, 17, depending on how long you need them.
System will be certified?
Yeah, I mean, it depends. There are certainly systems out there far in excess of 10 years. Right? That are still considered certified, but that landscape's changing too. But again, the whole point is, we're really trying to focus on the software itself. You know, these are, the tablets are Android-based. Android's not going away until soon, it comes out with updates, but we adapt to those. Right? Our backend systems are all Windows-based, but they're on the latest versions of software. In addition, as I mentioned, that we get end-of-life components, software becomes end-of-life, and we have a process for updating that. So, you know, there's a lot of systems, legacy systems out there that are still running, if you're lucky, on Windows XP. Not too long ago, there were still systems running on DOS. Right? And they did not have the capability of updating to anything newer than that. Right? What we're bringing into the state is all on the latest versions of Windows operating systems, Server 2016, SQL Server 2016 as well. All right? And we update that on a regular basis and redo all of our certifications appropriately. So, to kind of wrap this up, I did want to go through this briefly to show a couple concepts. This is, and this is a big change for the county, as you go to a paper-based system, is that you have things like voter intent issues, where voters are not always very good at reading directions and following directions when filling out ballots, and that can lead to issues like shown on the screen. So, this is an actual ballot that's been scanned on the ICC, the Imagecast Central. This is the front of the ballot. I can zoom in and out, and I'll just hide these overlays. This is a pretty common thing that you see when you have paper ballots. Even, you know, absentee, but even in precinct, somebody makes a mark, they don't want to go down to the elections office to get a new ballot, so they scratch it out, they make a little note. When this ballot gets scanned, if we look at the audit mark, because again, this is our patented record of how the ballot was interpreted when it was scanned, you can see it's being counted as an overvote right now. Right? Because it's got marks, identifiable marks for two candidates and a vote for one. But with our adjudication system, in the past, jurisdictions would have to actually duplicate, physically duplicate this ballot onto a new ballot, rescan it, re-tabulate it. Our system, we can do everything digitally, so I can go here and I can simply make a selection, vote removed for choice Howard Hughes. And if I complete that, that ballot is no longer an overvote, it's now a vote for the intended candidate, it moves on to the next ballot that needs to be addressed. I can show you what happens. I go back here, I open up that ballot again. Here's the audit mark. Now, there's an appended record that shows that a mark was removed for Howard Hughes, and now it is a valid vote for Amelia Earhart. Right? That's that kind of transparency and auditability that our system has and nobody else does. And that is tracked, date and timestamped. I'm currently, this is the user I'm logged in as, so you can assign unique users to teams. So, you have a guaranteed record, not only of how the ballot was cast and interpreted originally, but any adjudications made to it. And we have a whole secondary system called our ballot audit and review module that allows you to post-process these images and records for audits and various other campus-related activities. Any questions on that? And then, obviously, no system is complete without a tallying and reporting system. That's what we have here. All right? So, this is where the data eventually ends up. And then, we have a variety of reports, state-level exports, extracts, canvas reports. We can slice and dice at various levels, you know, if you want to separate out your early voting from your absentee totals, from your election day totals, if you want to look at things by district or by precinct, we have all of those capabilities as well.
Is that user amendable, your reports?
There is some slight customization, but generally, you know, we've added what we think are, based on our experience and our customer feedback, there are a lot of different options, but it is not sort of an ad hoc reporting system. So, we handle most of that with actual exports that can then be post-processed and consumed with other, with other reporting products. And we do have the ability to provide new exports.
Export the what?
We do a variety, CSV, XML, JSON. So, it depends on the application.
All right, so, that's kind of Eric's portion. Thank you, Lee. Adjudication is the last end of the backend things for the central scanning. And I know we have probably five more minutes before we can field any questions and have the commissioners want to come. Again, we wanted to swiftly go through this, a lot of information, so again, appreciate your attention and time. We have Imagecast Remote, IntegroCava, integrated with our system. We also have mobile ballot printing, so printing on demand. So, to answer your question, Mike, we do have three different levels, actually. OK Data printers, 300 series, 700 series, and 900 series, you're able to print ballots here. We've got a little bit into that, so keep going. Audit the ballot, we've got a little bit into that. We have a dual threshold technology. Ian, if you wanted to step in and mention this.
Yeah, I mean, again, this is one of those technical issues. Again, having not really dealt with a lot of paper in the past in this county, when you're dealing with paper, you know, you're counting pixels essentially within the old one. Right? And just because scanners tend to scan slightly differently from scanner to scanner, from day to day, you get smudges, whatever, old optical mark recognition systems had a single threshold. So, anything below was definitely not a vote, anything above was a vote. Problem is, is if you have a mark that's right on that threshold, scanning it multiple times, you can get different results. So, what we've done is, instead of having a single threshold level, we have a dual threshold level. So, we have a lower bound. Anything below the lower bound is not a vote. Anything above the upper bound is a vote, and anything in between is what we call an ambiguous or marginal mark. Right? How we use that is in-person voting. The tabulator will actually not accept the ballot with a marginal mark. So, it forces the voter, because they're standing right there, to make their intent clear. So, we try to eliminate that issue of results changing in any kind of recounts, because you've got a mark right in that, that single threshold. Absentee ballots, obviously, we don't have the voter there, so we don't have direct control, but anything with a marginal mark is also sent to adjudication. So, you can look at things like, is the mark consistent? Is it a hesitation mark? And then, you can make that determination on what the voter's intent was.
What's the minimal pixel number for a?
So, it's configurable. So, generally, most of our accounts are choosing anywhere between five and 10 for the lower bound.
Wow.
And about 25 for the upper bound. Okay. So, you know, the lower it is, the more you're going to have to look at. But again, with our digital adjudication system, that process is very easy and efficient. So, they'd rather look at more ballots to guarantee that full voter intent is being applied.
The cost for your Imagecast X?
The image, which, just the actual touchscreen itself, roughly $2,700.
And can you tell me, then, the difference in price between the two scanners?
They're the same. So, this is $3,500. This is $3,500.
They're both $3,500.
Correct. And I will go, and I have a quote, depending upon which one you want me to quote, I will have it ready for you. And also, we are applying a 25 to 30% discount. I'll mention this at the end too, and hopefully commissioners will be happy to hear. I'll get into that more later on, but those were just list pricings that I gave, so. I want to go over this, just hit the ones to keep going. So, of service and support. You guys? All right, here we go. So, the last thing I want to mention, Eric, thanks again for a couple of our core technologies. One quick anecdote on the audit mark. I found this out, we just had a recount, I forget the county in California, attempted recount. One of the candidates, I think it was very small margin, I think like 100-some votes were the separate, maybe a couple thousand. And he brought his lawyers in, they said, I want to challenge this, make sure every vote was counted. Before he paid anything, this candidate, like I said, wanted to make sure everything was right. Election official, director came in and said, you might want to check out what the meeting has, called our audit mark. Set down 1 through 30 ballots, verify each vote individually. I said, that's all right, I'm not going to, I'm not going to contest this, I'm not going to hire a lawyer. So, real-life example, real-life situation of how the audit mark was used in that situation.
That's actually happened in multiple counties.
There we go.
Over the last couple of years. It happened in a couple in Colorado as well, and in Mexico.
That one has two pieces, but it also has a third one. How much is that?
Which, third one?
ICP.
Oh, this one's, this is, this is $3,900.
Is that with the base on?
The base is $1,000. Again, we kick them together, and we will supply a discount at the end to make that. You'll be able to see in the quote that I provide, Mike, and to Mike and you guys, so. So, sir?
I'm sorry. Would you, would you, I don't know how to say this, is they all ADA compliant, or do you have to buy the special ADA compliance for the ballot marketing device?
So, they all support it. So, whether the kit includes the ATI or not would affect the price.
Okay.
So, you wouldn't necessarily buy 100% with the associated accessibility.
Might only need one on the poll.
Exactly. But they can be used on any of the ICXs that are there.
So, again, the old way of thinking, most, a lot of other vendors, not sure, but I can speak to ours, we can, you can mix and match the ATI specifics. So, you'll buy 55 ATI kits, so, and you can mix and match the actual touchscreen with any one of them. Oftentimes, with some of the old vendors with proprietary parts and pieces, you have to have this as our ADA accessible device. It doesn't, it doesn't work that way with us. We want to make sure it's seamless when you go to set up. We have bags there, that sets up the price, makes it as easy and efficient as possible. That will go into your scoping, so transition to our services support, we will come and scope what you currently have. So, warehouse, carts, if there's stuff we can use from your previous, yes, system, whether it's a bag or something like that, we will do our best to come in. We've done a lot of great work customizing. Speaking of which, our service and support team will come in. Washoe County, Nevada, where Reno is, they wanted their logo on the side. They wanted it blue. Some counties wanted it white. You could get your Lebanon logo on it if you'd like, you could purchase the booth instead. Again, the whole idea is, I will work hand-in-hand with you, Mike, to make sure you get the voting system and make sure your election looks the way it wants, and a lot of the maintenance and transportation needs that you would like to meet, I'll make sure that we come in and scope you out for that as well. So, on our team, I'm obviously, again, I love what we have. I think it's a new way of thinking about voting technology and systems. This is your fifth one. In my mind, our team is top-notch, they come, and I want to make sure we highlight them. If there's anything we said today, there will be a learning curve and transition with the new system. That's going to happen, new form of thought, especially when you have the paper component. Our idea is to make sure our team makes sure that this county has the best transition
Our idea is to make sure our team makes sure that this county has the best transition possible. We've got a team that's all within, like I said, two, three hours' drive. You can see a couple of the qualified people that we have. We will have a full implementation support, training needs, ongoing service support, onsite support. That's all, again, completely negotiable, Mike, what, what you feel most comfortable with, with your team. With that being said, this will be the very last thing I mentioned before we get into questions. How are we going to pay for this? So can, getting with, keeping with the idea of flexibility, we have two ways you could purchase the system. I call it the old way, outright purchase. You pay a large upfront sum cost. Then you pay your annual license and warranty fees in the years after, similar to what you do now. So you own the equipment, it's yours. Large upfront sum every year after. We also have what's called managed service, this is the second form of payment. Managed service agreement, continue with the Alphabet soup, MSA agreement. The best way you can sum it up is essentially a lease. We own the equipment, we lease it up to you. We take what you would pay throughout the course of that contract, throughout the eight years, six years, 10 years, and we divide that by eight and you pay that small line item price each year. So as a commissioner's standpoint, your election office will have, there's our budgeted line item. Let's just say we include too much, you just want to over-prepare. Four years of training, real-life example in Tennessee, they actually understood the system so easily and efficiently, we refunded them the money for the three years that they were planning on paying. We put it in their bank and we never charged them. You don't get what you don't pay for in that situation and in general. But it also keeps the system from going obsolete. So if you select the managed service agreement, within that agreement, if you want to elect, elect for system upgrades, so with any system upgrade, you'd have to retrain, program. If we make an adjustment, let's just say to the tablet, let's just say to the VV pad or to the printer, you, you 100% does not allow your parts and pieces to go obsolete. You're constantly getting those updates with, because we own the equipment. So if you want to elect to have that, that's a great way in years six, seven, eight, to continue that trend. So those are the two flexible purchasing options. And I, again, I will work with Mike, depending upon how you guys want to meet, discuss. Again, we had a lot of options. Our job is to make sure that we get the right system for the county. And I know currently, like I said, we have, I tell this to our 11 customers, it's a big decision, it's a valuable, it's democracy. You got to make sure it's secure, it's protected. Make sure you go with the system I feel is best for this county. I'll do everything in my power to make sure. If you come with Dominion and we're hopeful that you are, we want to work with you. We're very passionate about what we do. I joke, I have a kid coming in a month, I got to work for a lo, a long time. So we will absolutely be here for you. I'm not going anywhere and neither is Matt, neither is Eric. So thank you again.
If, I, I keep watching a little card go in there. And I was wondering if one of those, they're a lot smaller. It's stick it in your shirt pocket, you could walk off with it, goes to the laundry, whatever. Somehow, somebody else gets their hands on one. Can they use that in future elections at different polls?
Absolutely not, no. No, so there's, there's election-specific security information. So every election gets a secure key. In addition, the contents of these cards are encrypted. So there's, there's key exchange that's, that's going along to actually obtain the information on this card. So, and we've had full penetration, penetration, security testing done on these cards as well. So we do everything we can to make those secure. But even if it does walk off, each election has some very unique signature data that prevents reuse. Yes, sir.
You said twice that in six months, you're ready to bring them up to vote. So what are the trading parameters for the various people voting?
So we have a couple of different options. One is train the trainer. That was the one we would suggest. In the quote, I give you guys a week to train. Again, if Mike does, feels that he needs more time, we could always add more time. So to answer your question, to train the folks in the pools, I would suggest a train the trainer. We found that to be the most effective. Mike has someone in this county that is ahead of the poll workers. I know, I know it's not a union-based process there. But if someone is very technologically savvy, they could speak the old language from the old system to the new one, we train that person. And then that is how that training process would begin. Or we could come in and train, if you want to pay someone here, stay here for a week to train daily, we also have that option as well.
Well, I just, I just didn't know how long, you know, I mean, we have, we have machine operators.
Yeah.
Which?
Right.
Don't always show up or we don't have enough, depending on the polling. We have to have your clerks, we have to, have to do some other things. But if they have to be able to program the cards or activate the cards or whatever, are we talking hours, days?
No, I would say hours. If, again, not to say it varies, but it does, it does vary. It, it varies. So if you have someone who can follow, we have a quick guide setup instructions that we always have with each of our systems, they could follow that and say if they missed the training day. And we have found in the previous three years of supplying the system,